Get myself off mute. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. This meeting is called to order. This is the Clarkston City Council's special call meeting. I am Beverly H. Bergs, Mayor Presiding Officer, and this meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at ten a.m. We'll do roll call. We'll have Vice Mayor Yasu, Councilman Carroll, Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins. Councilwoman Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Perkins. So we have four, uh, we have three council members and myself. We do have quorum to proceed. Um, we have public comments at this time. Mr. Gomez, did anyone sign up for public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. There is no old business and the only new business is E one, which is the presentation and public hearing to take comment on on the millage, proposed millage rate of advertised, I'm sorry. The subject is to discuss the fiscal, okay, there, thank you. Um, the presentation and public hearing to take comment on the proposed two thousand and twenty-one millage rate. Mr. Gomez, would you proceed with the presentation?
Thank you and mayor and council. This meeting is to discuss the proposed millage rate for the current fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. We are required by Georgia code to adopt a millage rate. DeKalb County requires that we provide the information to them prior to July the second or by July the second, two thousand and twenty-one. So at the last work session, we had the discussion regarding the, we presented the county's valuation rates and what the millage rate could be. Uh, the council determined that we would not, what we advertised was that we would not a millage rate of fifteen point eight-nine. Uh, currently due to the not adopt, not setting, advertising the rollback millage rate of fourteen point five-five-seven, we are required to have three public hearings. This is the first public hearing for adopting the millage rate. The second public hearing will be later this evening and the third one will be next week, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at the regular city council meeting. We, as I stated previously on this item, uh, we advertised a millage of fifteen point eight-nine. The proposed rollback rate is fourteen point five-five-seven. I will explain a little bit more as I get into the presentation. But again, the purpose of this meeting is to take, is to have a discussion, take public comment on what the councils desired a two thousand and twenty-one millage rate. So as I stated, our agenda, we have a presentation, the discussion, the public hearing, and then eventually at next week's meeting, we will adopt a, the council will adopt a resolution setting the final millage rate uh, for the current fiscal year. As I stated, here's the listing of the three public hearings that we are required to hold. And again, the purpose of this meeting to take public, to have discussion and take public comment um in setting the final adopted military. A few definitions of our, in order to, for the, everyone to understand uh what the millage rate is and how that is determined, we start with an appraised value of the total estimated value of all the property within our city limits as determined again by the DeKalb County tax assessors. All the assessed value is then taxed at a, at approximately forty percent, uh, which the forty percent is identified as the appraised value of a property. Also, residents may qualify for a variety of exemptions that further lower what their appraised taxable value will be. Uh, all of this then compiles is rolled into what's called a tax digest. So that's the value of all the property, the land, buildings, everything uh, within a geographic area. For our purpose, obviously, our geographic area is the corporate city limits of the city of Clarkston. And again, when we receive our tax digest data, which we presented at the last meeting, it is provided to us at forty percent of the total assessed value. The millage rate, so a millage rate is, is essentially a tax rate, but it's determined by a mill. And what is a mill? It's it's a one dollar uh per thousand dollars of taxable property value. So everybody's property has a, has a value, as I stated, and then governments like the city of Clarkston and other taxing authorities levy a tax, which is also called a mill. So if the rate is, for simplicity, if a government is levying a, a ten-mill tax rate, then property owners would pay ten dollars for every thousand dollars of the assessed value of your house. The rollback millage rate, which we've discussed previously, is a millage rate that would rate, that would raise the same amount of revenue in the prior year if applied to the current tax digest. Now, we have been, for the most part, been fortunate that the tax digest has grown. Uh, so as your tax digest grows, then if you do not, if you leave your millage rate at the same, then you would receive more revenue the year that your tax, that your tax digest grew. The rollback rate is a typically a lower tax rate, millage rate, that would generate the same amount of revenues in the prior year, but you would be applying it to a higher uh tax digest. So that's why we discussed and proposed that we utilize a, the rollback rate for the current year. This slide shows our ten-year gross digest history. And you can see where here in Clarkston, obviously, we experienced some decline in the beginning of the two thousand and ten's, but since two thousand and fourteen, there's been a steady, steady increase, and I do apologize, I need to correct that. Percentage at the bottom should be fourteen point six percent of the increase from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. So we went from two hundred and twenty point five million to two hundred and fifty-two, uh, just under point two million. That's what the county provided to us uh, as the growth in our tax digest. So the value of all of our property again is that the slide shows we lost about thirty percent of the Clarkston gr- tax digest from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, but since then it has grown by over two hundred and fifty-six percent in the last eight years. And the increases are attributable mainly to increased residential and commercial values. Uh, our residential values increased nearly twenty percent, nineteen point six percent. Commercial value is just under fourteen percent. You can see the amounts of the increases again as provided to us by DeKalb County. So at the mil- at our rollback rate, which is what we had proposed in the agenda item, our rollback millage rate of fourteen point five-five-seven would be approximately one point three-three of less mills, approximately an eight point four percent decline, and the value of one mill just over two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So what does that mean for, this slide just provides you the three different options, uh, the three based on the tax digest that we received from DeKalb County. Uh, you can see that our tax revenue for real property, public utility taxes, personal property taxes and motor vehicle taxes, these are the taxes that are subject to, uh, that we receive from the levy of the, of the millage. So the tax rate. We had purple, when we adopted, when the council adopted the budget back in December of two thousand and twenty, we had proposed a revenue, again, three million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty-four. The tax digest that we received from the county of, uh, last month, if we've left the millage at the same fifteen point eight-nine mills, then our proposed revenue would be just over four million. If the millage rate was lowered by one mill to fourteen point eight-nine, then our revenue would be three million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-five. If we that adopted the rollback rate at fourteen point five-five-seven mills, then our revenue would be three million, six seventy-one, two-one-four. So just to provide what the different options, of course, any other uh, millage rate, we can calculate that, and that would be taking the millage rate uh, and multiplying it by the two hundred and fifty-two um, thousand. So we can determine uh whatever, but just wanted to show that this is what the revenue would be relative to our adopted budget. The next slide will show the, our millage rate history uh, and where we, again, in the early two thousand and ten's, there were a couple of years of increases, and then from two thousand and fifteen, a decrease, two thousand and sixteen, a decrease, and then it's remained the same for the past five fiscal years. And again, I simply included any here. The rollback rate is a proposed uh, or a potential millage rate, but it can be anywhere between fourteen point five-five-seven and fifty, it could be anywhere below, excuse me, lower than fifteen point eight-nine. Uh, this is just what we know so far. Uh, the next slide of other cities in our area, what their millage rates are, and you can see where, where we stand and relative to other jurisdictions. Of course, you have to take into account that uh, most of these of our other cities in the county, their property valuation is significantly higher uh, than Clarkston's, and hence a reason why for some, for most of them, their millage rate is, is lower. Uh, this, the next slide just shows the increase in the net tax digest. And you can see the increases, uh, we, again, relative to the size of the other cities. This just kind of tells you what other cities increases were, but everybody had an increase. So what does it mean for the taxpayer is again, how taxes are computed? You have an appraised value and assessed value. The assessed value becomes the taxable value, and if at a rollback rate, a, a property that was appraised at seventy-five thousand would pay four hundred, just under four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, again, the a property appraised at a hundred thousand would pay again, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, and just to give you the, I mean, the calc- the calculations, property at two hundred thousand would pay, I'm sorry. A property, if it was at a hundred and fifty thousand at the rollback, I mean, they would pay uh, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. So these are just to show how taxes are computed, and anybody can compute these on, on their own property. And I just utilized a, a couple of different millage rates to show um, what the city's taxes rates would be. And keep in mind that the city's property taxes as a pers- is only, is one of, of numerous taxing authorities or other governments, most everybody or every property in Clarkston would seize on their tax bill taxes levied by DeKalb County in about five different categories, as well as the school district, and then lastly, the city of Clarkston. Also included in a, in a property tax, in the property tax bill are the city's sanitation assessment and the city's uh stormwater assessment. But for purposes of this discussion and to take, to have, and also to take public comments, we're looking to determine what the city council would like the fiscal two thousand and twenty-one millage rate to be. So be happy to answer any questions.
Gomez, and again, I'm very happy to see the increases that we're doing as a city. And so I will open it up. Um, did we have anyone signed up for the public meeting today?
No, we did not, and we do not have anyone on the meeting from the public other than uh, city council members and city staff.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we gave people the opportunity.
Correct.
Hearing that, um, I definitely want us to make sure that we consider maybe looking at the millage rate from just dropping it to a mill to the fif- fourteen point eight-nine, because haven't we had a lot of, well, not a lot, we've had people to um contest their property value.
Yes, yeah, the appeal process.
Right, and then that would, if we just dropped it by one millage rate, that would still give us a cushion if people were to challenge the milit rate, their appraisal value.
Yes.
Okay.
Other mayor?
Yes, and I saw Councilman Hassan had a question or comment.
Mr. Gomez, if we take the rollback rate, uh, the revenue will be three, three million, six, three million, six hundred and seventy-one, two hundred and fourteen dollars, correct?
Yes.
And the adopted budget is three, seven, seven, zero, three, eight, four?
Yes.
Would you have, what's the difference? About, uh, ninety-nine?
Right.
Ninety-nine, ninety-nine thousand dollars.
About ninety-nine, just about a hundred thousand for simplis- simplicity.
So are you okay with that? Can you cover with any other points with that?
We're, we're comfortable with that, uh, simply because we, we are other revenues that can make up that difference that um, that would be able to make that up. So we're, that's, you know, just to, as a proposal that we do go back to the rollback rate. Um, again, as I stated, we don't have to. Uh, with, what the mayor said is, is correct. The, the risk with going back to the rollback rate or even lowering it by a mill um, are, is the unknown of the number of appeals. And I will tell you that, as I stated before, in the last two years, we have had the most number of appeals that we've likely ever had. Um, and that's because Clark, the county has, what, what appears is essentially catching up as property values have increased all around us. They, they had not here in Clarkston, and now they are, and those increases um
Do you have the, do you have the number of appeals that, uh, we lost revenue last year?
Last year, we had over sixty appeals, uh, close to three hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
So that plus the one hundred, I mean, if we take that as an assumption, uh, it's gonna be close to four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars less than the budget.
Well, that's, that's the unknown. I mean, we, it was just under three hundred thousand for la- for last year, for two thousand and twenty. Uh, so, but yeah, we were still able to make up that revenue through other uh revenue sources. Uh, also, we did lower some of our expenditures. Uh, but we're, we're at the point where if it's, as the mayor stated, even if we were at the one, at the fourteen point eight-nine, that's much more palatable, um, to if, if we have a significant number of appeals. Again, we don't know. I mean, we went from about forty in twenty nineteen to sixty last year. Um, and, and again, most of that revenue, the appeals were from the apartment complexes. Um, that's where the majority of that revenue loss came from.
Did you figure it out? If you rounded it up to fifteen, how much it will, will be?
Uh, yeah, I could do that.
Drop it by mail, Councilman Hassan, it's still like a twenty-five percent um difference between the adopted budget.
Yeah, just gonna make sure, because, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of appeals because the property, you know, values, the way they, you know, they, weight is, is much higher. So I'm just wondering if that will give us, you know, will put us in a, in a situation that's over six hundred thousand dollars budget less. So it's my opinion, so everybody have, you know, but.
At, at fifteen, at fifteen mills, our revenue is three million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. So it's a bu- a little bit, about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars above the adopted budget if we were to go down to fifteen point zero-zero mills.
And we're still saving point eight-nine percent mills, you know, for the homeowners.
Right, correct, the decrease.
Well. All right, calm down.
Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think, uh, those, uh, two, um, potentials are definitely, um, uh, valid, uh, both, uh, what Madam Mayor was saying and Councilman Hassan. Uh, but I think if it is, um, uh, not substantial, um, we probably, uh, could stick with the rollback rate and, um, um, I think the way I see it, um, we could even go further because we haven't really done any reduction in our taxes for a very long time besides keeping it the same rate, um, while the value of, uh, assessment has been going up every single year. Um, so we definitely could be safe at the rollback rate and, um, uh, unless, uh, we, we have, um, between now and, um, next week, unless we come up with, uh, a consensus plan that some, we can have a project that has a consensus that really is imminent and needed and, uh, but if not, I think, uh, uh, we probably would rather stick with the, with the rollback rate or even lower, um, than that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilman Perkins, did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, rather just a, a question on the appeals. How many of those, uh, just from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty are repeat? Is this something where we're looking at sort of the same group, you can kind of get a general estimate, or, uh, I mean, I know we have the, you know, an increase of twenty. Um, I'm just wondering.
Right, most of them are a repeat.
Okay. Um, actually, I'm assuming we did have twenty new ones.
Pretty much, yes, pretty much.
Okay. Um, is there any way of estimating, you know, looking at that? I mean, do you have any sense, or are we looking, you know, say, at eighty, you know, maybe eighty this year, with that?
There's no way, no way for us to determine that, and even getting the data from the county uh, is difficult only because due to the, I think, a large number overall, we're, we're not even sure. Uh, we get them pretty late. I mean, they're due by July one. We don't, we didn't get a lot of the data until January and February of this year. So, yeah, it's just because I think they've had so many, one, uh, but two, um, how their process, we're still trying to figure out how they make the determinations, until they resolve it. Essentially, a property reverts back to the value that they were either last year or the year before, so before the increase. And then they, they pay that amount, or if they just went ahead and paid their bill and then, and, you know, while they, before they received the resolution to their appeal, then that's what causes, you know, that's what forces us to lose revenue. Um, so in, in other words, the total taxable value, the digest decreases, um, but we don't even know what that entire decrease is. We, we will not know that this year likely. We're hoping to, but we would, may not even know that. The county just gives us interim reports when there, when there has been an adjustment, in other words, where our revenue was less. So again, it's just very difficult to determine.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then, okay, Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, uh, I'm just curious, uh, also, um, does the CARES Act, uh, cover for any shortfalls on the budget that, uh, might incur um, this year or next year?
So it, it can, but it, it is, it will not because it's total, it's citywide. So across all funds, and we did not lose revenue across all of our funds in two thousand and twenty, and we likely will not this year either.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, did you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to add that again this week, I would like to um, show favoritism to the rollback rate um, at the fourteen percent. I think that will be a good access. It will be something good for us to offer the community, and it won't hurt us.
My only concern is I, I, I would like for us to either do that fifteen or that fourteen point eight-nine, not go all the way down to the fourteen five-five, is that we have to factor in those, um, those, the, the people us wanting to reduce their, uh, conflict in terms of what their assessment is, and then any other foreseeable things down the road. I, I always want to make sure that we give our staff, um, wiggle room and enough wiggle room, um, to make the adjustments so that we're not, uh, worried about loss of services. So that's my only concern is that, um, it would be great because we have it reduced the milit rate in, I guess, what, over twenty-something years, so that would be something great to celebrate. But I think we also have to be mindful of the amount of the rollback that we wanted to. Yes, Vice Mary Yasu?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I certainly understand, um, your angle, but, um, I mean, the, the city, uh, staff and the city manager was actually comfortable with the rollback rate, even to advertise it. So, uh, I think I was the one who was kind of trying to make sure that we have wiggle room. And, um, so I, I, I really kind of don't see a lot of difference in terms of the fraction, even if we put it on fifteen percent. Uh, the city manager was mentioning it would be about twenty thousand dollars. And, uh, if it is not gonna be, I think there is no, there is no point on, um, on trying to see any, um, my, at least if it is gonna be less than one millage rate, I think there's no point on doing it. So I would either stick with the rollback rate, um, or if we are comfortable with, uh, reducing it lower maybe, but if not, there got to be some really good reason that there's, there has to be some, something that we want to do with the one milit rate and be able to, um, justify it with our residents. But, uh, the city staff and our city manager was actually comfortable with the rollback rate and, uh, probably, um, I would start from that vantage point, and if we, um, if we, unless we feel like, uh, we just keep it at fifteen point eight-nine, I'm not sure about that, but, uh, if, if not, there's not much a lot of difference. I mean, from what I was hearing as the city manager was responding to the question by Councilman Hassan, it seems the numbers are pretty minimal, and if that's the case, uh, the, I think it's not worth it. Let's, let's just stick with the recommendation that was given to us by our city manager.
Yes, House Minister.
Yes, uh, no, there's one thing that, you know, the, you know, the city manager and the staff, you know, I deal with numbers every day. And when you have, you know, yes, um, m- m- Mr. Vice Mayor, yeah, don't look at the tw- you know, twenty twelve, you know, you know, thousand dollars alone, but, uh, we don't know what the appeals are coming with, and, uh, moving those numbers, I just don't want to put them in a situation. And this is the first year from nine to twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we just want to take it down like one point four some, you know, for, you know, point, i- i- in a mail down rate. So I still, I'm not pushing it, but I'm, I'm suggesting it, okay? Knowing how stressful it, you know, to move it around in a budgeting when, when, when you, when you do that, and later on something unexpected, we're dealing with the future, we don't know what will happen. So that's why I am asking at least stay, still we, you know, it's point eight-nine percent, it's close to a nine, point one percent if you round it up. Uh, that fifteen covers you up, so you deal with the, uh, with the appeals. You will never know because the way it is, you know, I, you know, you, I, I used to pay sixteen hundred dollars, and I pay today fo- fo- four thousand, five hundred dollars for property tax. Not only that, we're dealing with the Clarkston, all the other taxes, schools, uh, Martha, all that's coming in. So actually, the, the number that we are dropping is just gonna be very, you know, insignificant. So that's why I'm suggesting fifteen. I'm not, y- you know, arguing that we have to stay lower than that. That doesn't make sense real, much of a sense, but there, if you guys stuck with the rollback rate, I'm fine, but I'm suggesting fifteen. So that's, uh, So that's, uh, where I stand, Mr. Vice Mayor and Madam Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Hassan. And and I'm with you in terms of making sure that. A, we want to roll it back. B, we want to make sure that we have enough cushion from where we are with the adopted budget. To where we have to deal with any appeals. So I think we're all in agreement that we definitely want to reduce it. It is just by the amount that we do it. Um, I, especially given what we've gone through the last year with COVID and everything else, I don't want to put us in a situation where. Our adopted bu- budget, the millage rate. There's an issue in terms of the difference between the adopted budget and what we do with this millage rate. So. We saw with decreasing it to the fourteen point. Five, five, seven, you know, that's nearly almost a hundred thousand, um, difference from the adopted budget excluding. Any appeals that will happen. And so that is again my concern and if, again, I think we're all in agreement that. We want to reduce it is just the amount of the reduction. That we just have to get on the same page. You say fifteen, I like fourteen point eight nine. Uh, Vice Mayor wants to go lower than that. Um, and and I I understand, but I think we all need to think about. The appeals process and making sure that we. Look at how much that's gonna impact, uh, reducing the adopted budget going forward. We do, and Mr. Gomez, we, this. This doesn't include, for example, our lease leasing, um. Revenue, right? The.
This, this is only for the revenues that are listed on the screen. That are subject to the, to a tax, to the mill levy. So, real property, public utility, and it's only a portion of public utility revenue that we receive. It's not all of it. Personal property and then motor vehicle. Motor vehicles. So those four revenue sources are the ones that are, that are derived. Uh, mainly from the millage, the tax, the millage rate that is taxed. All the other revenues are from, are derived in a different method, a different format.
And we've seen with the public utilities, we've seen an increase, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, they've all increased, uh. Because again, the tax digest has increased. Uh, and then most of our other revenues have also. Had, you know, similar increases, uh, except in twenty twenty. When we were closed, there were a few revenues that I've mentioned before, like some of our, you know, pavilion rentals, pool. We had no admissions, our entertainer revenue permits because we were not issuing those permits, but. All of that is back up and running in twenty twenty-one.
Do you have comments, counsel?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Perkins?
And, uh, I'm. I'm having a little, some audio issues, so I may, I may admit something here, but, um. Uh, I did hear something on sort of sanitation charges that I think, I'll have to go back and look, but I think one thing that I consider as well. Um, is some of those rates, that rate might be going up. I believe there's a watershed project. Um, or some sort of infrastructure project, um, that may be, um. Coming down the pipeline, if I can be so bold as to phrase it that way. Um, that that might increase that rate as well, um. So I don't know, Mr. Gomez, if you know anything about that. It's just something I heard in passing at an event I went to.
Well, that would, I I think you're referring to our stormwater?
I think so, yeah. I think there's a larger county project, um.
Right, but it would not, yeah, ours, we control, the city council controls setting all of our rates. Um, obviously with with the exception of sales tax. Uh, but all the other, including especially fees, uh, unless the state. Provides, you know, a state adopts and a code, a state code. Altering it, we control our sanitation rates, we control our stormwater fee. So whatever that is to be, the city council sets. Uh, those rates, I have not heard of anything that we will, and it wouldn't just be us, it would be every city. That we would be mandated to adopt a higher fee. So I have not heard that. I guess we will inquire. But again, the council determined, and I believe three or four years ago. The council did increase the stormwater fee to its current just under sixty-four dollars. Uh, for the whole year as well as the sanitation fee. Um, two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and nineteen dollars a year, somewhere around that. And that, again, the council. Adopted those about probably four years ago.
Would that be, would that be something that we could experience an increase in terms of, because I'm assuming we're not. You know, we may be charging that fee, but we're not necessarily maintaining all of that infrastructure ourselves, right? That's something that.
For stormwater?
Uh, well, for stormwater and then, um. Uh, just general water, water as well.
We don't, uh, maintain anything having to do with water. That's all, water is an enterprise fund. So, and the county provides that service, so all of the revenue. Or the majority of the revenue comes from the fees that we all pay for water to the county. Um, now, if the county wants to issue bonds. Uh, there is those bonds and, I mean, it would be, I'd have to review Georgia code. But part of those bonds could be. Uh, repaid via a an adjustment in the county's millage rate. Um, I, or the fees that we all pay for our water consumption.
Okay. We don't have to, we don't have to go into Georgia code for the purposes of this discussion, that's just, uh. My, my memory was jogged by a comment that was made, so I appreciate it.
Problem. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, um, if we have no other comments, then we can adjourn the meeting. And we will have our second hearing this evening.
Six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. So I, I'm asking for someone to move to adjourn the meeting.
Madam.
Okay, uh, Councilman Perkins?
I knew that we adjourned the special call meeting.
Okay, it's been moved appropriately second that we adjourn the special call meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, Hassan, did you say aye too?
Yes, aye.
Okay, okay. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.